We're here for the Board of County Commissioners Budget Workshop. It's June 14, 2022, and I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks. Mayor Weinroth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, Vice Mayor Weiss is going to do the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Would everybody please rise?
Before we begin our business at hand, let us ask, give voice to our sincere gratitude to the divine for allowing us to reach this day with the abundant blessing that our great community has bestowed. Let us pray that with sacred guidance from the Almighty, our decision-making, for our decision-making, we may continue the work for the betterment of all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, we're going to reorder the agenda. All right, we won't. I guess if anybody was watching this morning, you'll know that we had a few changes to the agenda, but we're going to do this without any changes. All right. County Administrator, it's always good to see you, even though I'm used to seeing you over there. You want to make your presentation?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board. We're here today for our budget workshop. This workshop is designed to lay out my proposed budget with input from some of you on various issues and also knowing what we've got ahead of us. And so I will, at the end, request any directions or criticism or other inputs that you have at the end of this session. But we're going to, we started this process back in November of 2021. We held our Budget Strategic Priority Workshop. You set those priorities for us. We then moved on with, today will be our initial budget workshop. We request that the board set the millage rate on July 12 at a regular BCC meeting, and then we'll hold our first public hearing on our budget, September 13, 2022, and then our second public meeting, which is the adoption of our budget, on September 20, 2022, effective October 1. During our strategic priority workshop, the board laid out your strategic goals and priorities: economic development, housing and homelessness, environmental protection, infrastructure, substance use and behavior disorder, and public safety. We took those priorities, and as the budget came in, we looked to see the requests coming in and the existing programs and how to continue to move forward under your guidelines for strategic priorities. Economic development, we maintain our 4.5 million for business incentives for housing and homelessness. We're looking at affordable housing and workforce housing projects. We have, for the last two years, included 5 million. I added an additional 5 million for $10 million in avalon funding for workforce affordable housing-type projects. Non-congregate shelters for the glades, we've got 2.4 million in our budget. Homeless Resource Center, 11.5. Our environmental protection reflects 4 million in natural areas and 750,000 for manatee protection. For infrastructure, we've got, in our capital, proposed capital budget, 59 million. Palm Tran operations and vehicles, 63.3 million. Our substance use and behavior disorder for the addiction stabilization center, we still retain the 1 million that's currently in the budget. Our recovery support, 1.5. FAA, 6.3. And our CBAs, 1.6 million. Our public safety, our sheriff net budget is 724.3. That is, the cost of the 800 million is offset by 91 point million dollars and leaving a net result of 724 for the sheriff. Animal care and control, 10.3. Emergency management, 2.7. And victim services, 3.5 million. Our major assumptions and factors as we started to build this budget, we retain, we're recommending we retain the current 4.7815 mils. This will be the 12th year on holding the millage rate. Our proposed rate increase will generate roughly about 1.2 billion at 13.3% increase in the revenues. Across the board, of that 1.2 billion, I also want to point out that when we built our fiscal year 21, 22 budget, you allowed us to utilize ARPA dollars, the 46 million, to help offset. So that 1.2 billion does replace that 46 million that we added in, that one-time revenue. Across the board, 6% that we included, our compensation study, this is the last phase of the Evergreen Study. Health insurance increases was up 10.2 million. Our supplemental funding, 7.8 million, which includes 5 million for additional workforce housing. The other 2.8 million deals with other supplementals. Included is 15 added avalon-funded positions and 81 non-avalon-funded positions. The sheriff's budget is a net budget increase of 38.3 million. It includes 1.9 million of capital equipment and reflects, again, the 91.9 million in revenue that's generated through contracts. And then the net amount is 10 million less than what was originally requested by the sheriff. We did work with their office and reduce it by that amount. The fiscal year 2023 is 59 million, an increase of 18 million over fiscal '22 for our capital projects. And these are primarily renewal and replacement projects. And in addition, the sheriff's capital request is 1.9, as stated previously, and palm tran replacement vehicles of 3.6 million. Our capital project does include surtax funding, bonds, impact fees, building fees, as well as airports, water utilities department, and the tourist development council. General fund revenue impacts. If we go back to 2019, and I think if we all had a magic wand, we would make COVID-19 disappear from 2020. But we've got to deal with that reality. It had a significant impact on our general revenue funds. And so if COVID had not occurred, we projected, starting based on our actual 2019 revenues, that we could project a reasonable growth rate in revenue of 3.46 over the next five years. That did not occur. We took a major loss in 2020. So the difference between what we would have generated and what we generated was 34.9 million of a loss. '21 reflects 17.2 million loss. 2022 was 15.2, and we're predicting we'd be still looking at a 21.8 million revenue loss. So we are going gangbusters. We are recovering here in Palm Beach County, but we are also not where we would have been had COVID not come along and impacted our revenues. This next slide shows our major revenues, our revenue state sharing, half-cent sales tax, franchise fees, electricity, utility tax, electricity, communication service tax, utility. These are our primary major revenue sources. And if you look at those, in 2019, we generated 227 million. But when you look at 2023, we're at 267. So over that five-year, over that period of time, we actually generated an additional 40.2 million. And most of that came from our half-cent sales tax, which you will reflect 27, almost 28 million. And we believe a significant portion came from related to online sales. Okay? So we want you to make sure you pay your taxes if you're ordering online. In 2023, we're projecting our general fund, sources of funds by category, through all of our categories, we're looking at roughly about 1.8 billion. Our current property tax of that 1.8 billion is 1.2 billion. The other revenues coming in would be fund balance, 317 million. Our transfers, charges for services, our next major revenue would have been intergovernmental revenues, 245 million. That includes our state revenue sharing, our half-cent sales tax, and PBSO at 82 million. Any questions? '23 proposed property tax equates to 1.6 billion, and that is for all of our taxing units under the board. Our countywide millage, 4.7815. Fire rescue, 3.4581. Jupiter fire at 1.9087, and libraries at 0.5491. And as the chart shows, countywide generated 1.2 billion. Countywide voted debt is at 7.3 million. Library operating generated 76 million, and the fire rescue, 379 million. Our avalon taxes, our values, we heard from our property appraiser this morning that our values have significantly increased. We're at 251.7 billion in values, which equates down to our millage rate of 4.7815. So we now have a countywide operating revenues generated for 2022 of a million, I'm sorry, a billion. And then in 2023, we went up to 1.2 billion, 141 million more that we would have in our budget, and that's the 13.3%. We have our countywide voted debt. You'll see that it is slightly decreasing, 0.8%. And we're look, again, looking at a total countywide of 13.2% increase over 2022. We have our dependent districts. Our gross dependent districts, we're looking at 12.9% increase. Our countywide funds and dependent districts equate to roughly about 13.1%. Our 2023 general fund total gross appropriation budget is 1.8 billion. Your county departments make up 25.6% of that. The sheriff law enforcement makes up 31.8%. The sheriff's corrections and judicial makes up roughly about 11.8%. Other constitutional officers, 4.7. Debt service, 3.1. Our capital and non-departmental makes up 9%, and then reserves makes up roughly about 14%. Our capital and non-capital, especially our non-departmental expenditures, reflect 168 million. Of that, 61.3 million is CRA that we have to pay right off the top. And then we have FAA's that are roughly about 13.8. The health department, 2.2. The healthcare district is 15 million, which helps us pay for Medicaid and also our nursing home. That's our proportionate share. The next slide just simply breaks down the CRA payments of 61 million.
I call my colleagues' attention to the fact you have a updated page 12 on the, on the desk here.
Okay, thank you. So it just reflects the fact that in '08, we were roughly under 30 million, and we're now a little over 60 million in payments to CRAs. So that is why you see your administrator get hives when we start talking about CRAs, because the demand for service is still there, but we're not getting the additional taxes to help.
You said you love CRAs, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
More CRAs. Then we move on to our cumulative percentage increase in avalon support. We're looking, again, comparing '07 till now, and we've got the various colors. We see where our taxable value definitely dipped over the years. We see where we generated roughly about a little over 56.4% when it comes to our taxable values. We also show where the BCC department actually increased about 56.4%. Tabor, which is our population and CPI that most people look at, how do you compare to Tabor? We, the BCC departments are below Tabor, and so are our values. But when we move forward, we are also looking at a combination in the light blue where we combine the sheriff as well as the BCC departments, we went up 81%. The green bar shows and reflects the sheriff's budget over the years of the 113.7%. However, during this period of time, inflation was up 41.7%, and our population increased by 17.5%. These next two slides just reflect that we have not kept pace with staffing as population increased. We looked at employees county, under the Board of County Commissioners, countywide, regardless of revenue source. We're at a little over 1.5 million in population, but we're staffed at a little bit over 1.3 million. And then the BCC avalon-funded departments were even slightly lower. So it is our goal to continue to increase the number of employees so that we can continue to provide reasonable service to our residents for a reasonable cost. Capital renewal and replacement, as you well know, we, we own a lot of structures, over 800 structures. We've got over 2 million square feet in those structures. We also have parks. We have open space, major acreage that we must maintain in order to reduce liability, ensure continuity of operations and reliability. It also helps us as we take a proactive role in ensuring our renewal and replacement program so we don't have numerous very costly repairs. And of course, we like to pay as we go. Sometimes that does not occur. However, an important element for our rating agencies is capital renewal and replacement, and they want to make sure that we're doing so in keeping up our infrastructure as well as our reserves. The next slide shows the history of our avalon surtax funding for capital. If you look back to 2007, we budgeted roughly about 73 million dollars in our capital program. The economy collapsed, and so as you saw, we annihilated our capital budget. The green bars actually show, once the public approved our infrastructure surtax, how we've allocated the dollars for projects that really cover where we just did not invest in those particular, in our renewal and replacement program. So we're just catching up. And we, every year, we've got another structure that has outlived its useful life, and we have to maintain those structures or replace them. Capital project funding, again, is primarily annual renewal and replacement. In fiscal 2022, we had 41 million. We're proposing that we bump that budget up to 59 million to continue to catch up, not get ahead. There are some critical projects that we believe we should seriously consider, and we're recommending that you consider. And those proposed projects are generators and hardening of, at critical facilities, roughly about 9.85 million. A medical examiner's office expansion, I came to you today earlier, you did approve some additional positions for our medical examiner. This gives her the appropriate space. We want to maintain an accredited medical examiner's office, and so we must meet accreditation standards, and this just keeps us moving forward and providing the space as well as the employees. Mosquito control redevelopment, that's our facility that's located at the Lantana Airport. We need to make sure that we are properly securing and maintaining our equipment as well as the chemicals and staff. SOE exterior hardening and repurposing of that, the building located at Military Trail and Gun Club Road, when the SOE moves out of that into her new facility, this facility, then we will expand our existing staff into, we are tight when it comes to quarters, and especially for our public safety-type needs. If the board decides to do this, we are proposing that you look, consider a non-avalon bond. Our non-avalon bonds must definitely meet a paramount public purpose, and these projects do, in our humble opinion. Our non-avalon bonds, we call NAV revenue bonds, are not backed by avalon taxes. They are pledged with all other resources but not avalon taxes. These bonds are funded by all unrestricted, as stated, and we meet the criteria for it. On page 20 and 21, I won't go through these, but these are our non-avalon bonds that are outstanding. When it was appropriate, we refinanced them so that we would have a lower interest rates. And so I think we are in pretty good condition as far as making sure we've got the lowest rate possible on the outstanding balance of these bonds. Page 22, principal and interest, these are our current costs. We've got NAV debt service for general fund, tourist development tax, transportation improvement fund. So in 2023, we will be looking at 73 million in non-avalon bond debt service payments of 73 million. But if you look out to 2028, we would be down to 49.2 million. So every year, some of our debt is dropping off. We believe as a result of that, we would be in a very good position to move forward with the non-avalon bond in order to fund our medical examiner generators and hardening our SOE exterior, and that's roughly about 47.37 in 2023. Our debt, we would not have to increase debt service to pay for that until 2024, and by then, our current debt service will have dropped down. So we'll see a slight, still a slight decrease in debt service payments for non-avalon. And then out in '27, if we continue to add, and the board considered doing a bond, non-avalon bond, for South County admin building, roughly about 80 million, we would still not see that impact until 2026 on debt service, and it still would be decreasing the debt service And I did a budget projection for you, starting with fiscal year 2022, what your adopted budget was, and then starting in 2023, with the 13% increase in property values, we're looking at 1.8 billion in avalon funding. And major revenues, also appropriations of 1.8 billion balancing. So in order to move forward with a simple majority vote, I would need to cut 51.5 million. I would need a supermajority vote to retain our existing millage at 4.7815, and then we would not, our balance, budget would be balanced. And we would require a supermajority for the next three years. We did make the assumption that in 2024, our revenues would increase by 8%. 2025, 5%. And 2026, by 5%. Millage rate impact on homesteaded properties. Our median value of 365,000 less the homestead exemption taxable value, based on our operating countywide millage rate, our voted debt, operating and voted debt service, our total tax would be $1,516.69. Based on what I'm proposing to you today, with the median value increasing of a home of 375,950, with a $50,000 homestead exemption, that taxable value would decrease to 325,950. That, to roll into countywide millage rates for operating and voted debt service, we're looking at a tax of $1,568.08 for a total increase of $51.39, roughly 3.4%.
All right. So I always have to take a deep breath when I start looking at the maximum millage rate to make sure that I follow the lines on this. So for fiscal year 2023, if we look at our proposed millage rate of 4.7815, and there's a calculation that comes up based on our prior year rollback rate and the per capita Florida income increase, the maximum millage rate is 4.5765. So since our proposed rate is above that, whatever millage rate the board approves has to be a supermajority vote for anything over the 4.575. And we're not looking at increasing higher, because there's even another, if you go up to five mils, it would be a two-thirds vote. But right now, with our proposed rate of 47815, we're looking at a supermajority vote.
And wrapping up on our last slide, just to highlight the fact that we've got future property value increases between now and July 1. Mrs. Jacks did inform us that she believes she'll be bringing some additional revenue in. That is not unusual. Every year between, after we get our June 1 values, between June and July, we generate roughly about 3 to 4 million dollars more. This year, we believe that it's going to be a little higher, but again, we'll wait until we receive that information from Mrs. Jacks. In addition, our major revenues have rebounded to fiscal year 2019 levels, but again, we had to make up for that 46 million ARPA funds that you allowed us to do to balance our budget for this year. So please keep that in mind, and in addition, the 61 million that we have to cut right off the top to give to our CRAs. So that's over $100 million that we have to reallocate or adjust for. So that is my proposed budget to you, and I am here to answer any questions you may have.
I guess the first question, and Sheri, we had this discussion this morning, what is the impact? What do we, what's a dollar impact to a taxpayer? How much do we spend that'll have a dollar impact on a taxpayer's bill? Do you have?
So, you know, we would have to, I mean, we kind of always look at that medium. What's the value of a house right in the middle of all the values of all the homes here in the county? And that's where we kind of looked at that median price to kind of say, that's where 50% are below it, 50% are above it. But we haven't really looked at the average, because it really skews it, I think, when Ms. Jacks was talking this morning, you have so many of the low houses, you know, depending on condos and things. So I don't know that I have a good answer for that.
Well, you bring up a good point.
For the median is on page 25.
Yeah. But you bring up a good point, Sheri. That 375,950, that's really skewed to the low end because of places like Century Village and Kings Point. And I think we'd all agree that the mode or where most houses are now in the county is closer to probably about 500.
Right. I mean, yeah, because this is not the average, it's just right down the middle. There's 300,000 homes below it, 300 above it, however many fall into that homesteaded category. So, but if we are looking at a half a million dollar home... So, but if we are looking at a half a million dollar home. So if we had a half a million dollar home in '22 that increased 3%, that would now be a $515,000 home with a $50,000 homestead exemption, takes it to 465 based on our current proposed millage rate, those taxes would be about $2,200 a year, so it's about $70 increase compared to '22.
Okay, very good. As the county administrator mentioned, during Ms. Jacks's presentation this morning, we have an assumption in here of 13.3% increase in property values. I think Dorothy said that the 13.55 is probably even a little light. How would that affect the revenue coming in?
Right, so we are using the property appraiser's estimated values. When she talks about a 13.5%, she's comparing it to what happened after the Value Adjustment Board, but since I'm comparing budget to budget, our adopted '22 budget was based on the values as of July 1. So that's where the 13.5 on our presentation versus, or our 13.3 versus her 13.5, she's basing it on a lower value for '22 because she takes into any changes from the Value Adjustment Board. But since we don't go back and amend our budget based on that Value Adjustment Board, we try to show you apples to apples, budget to budget. So that's why we're just slightly off on the percentage, but the actual estimated numbers are the same.
That two to three tenths of a point difference, do you have an idea what that would increase our revenues?
It won't because she's basing it off of a smaller number than what we are because I take the larger number that we had as of July 1. So that doesn't give us anything else. What we'll see is when we get the July 1 numbers, and if we have a 1% increase that she suggested, then we would collect more dollars, and it could be close to $10 million for that 1%.
Okay, all right. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. On page 22, you're, on your bond debt service forecast, on the, where you list the tourist development tax, didn't we approve bonds being issued for Roger Dean upgrades, and are those included in this?
They are not included at this time because we, you have approved for us to do the bonds issuing, but we have not issued the bonds yet. So once we actually issue those bonds, we'll build the debt service into this.
So there, there's, I want to say roughly $100 million? That will have to, that will then, and I assume it will come online next year?
I, you know, I think we low ended the Roger Dean for TDC in the beginning, so it's a smaller increase to TDC now of a couple of million dollars. And then it'll pick it up at the back end, and I don't remember the numbers offhand. I'm sorry, I didn't bring it with me.
It would be, could you take this sheet and rework it with, with those numbers in it? And are there any other outstanding, I mean, obviously, I don't know that I can remember everything else.
When we go to slide number 23, when we look at the current debt service of 73 million, it's really, or on 22 also, when we talk about any additional debt service, it would be funded out of the general fund. So, and these changes in the debt service is really related to the general fund.
It's all revenue with the exception of avalorum. We're pledging those revenues. And as Sherri stated, for Roger Dean, we ended up working our payment plan with the teams and taking into consideration the state coming to the table. We won't issue these bonds, that's the only out that we have with the contract in Roger Dean. If the state decides it's not going to fund its portion of the 50 million, then we're going to need to regroup. We're not going to issue those bonds, and we'll be coming back to the board to discuss other options. However, we're only, I want to say half a million for the first couple of years in debt service payment that we would be talking about, and then in the outer years, that amount will increase. By then, hopefully, we will have paid off some other things with the tourist development tax. But we can definitely redo that and include it.
Thank you.
Before I get to Commissioner Kerner, if we approve some GEO bonds, what would be the impact for each $100 million of GEO bonds on the residents as far as carrying those bonds?
Yeah, $100 million equates to about a .025 millage rate, so that's about $2.50 for every 100,000 of taxable value for residents. So it's 1250 for a half a million dollar taxable value.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Verdenia, for a very appropriate, I believe, budget submission request. And, you know, we're starting to talk about, at least in the out years, supermajorities, and I know that there's probably some appetite on this board to examine lowering the millage rate, which obviously we're not in position to do today. So I just wanted to flesh out some issues looking towards the future because some of the submissions have taken myself by surprise in this current, in 2023 fiscal year, which we're considering now. With regard to the CRAs, is there a landscape of when they start sunsetting?
Your favorite subject.
You know, on one hand, there's a lot of taxable value we're missing out on, but that's because the CRA is kind of doing what it was designed to do, and that's increased growth and development in that area. Now, I'm starting to side with you more and more over the years, but be that as it may, is there any relief in the future in the next five years from any of these CRAs, or we're stuck with them for the time being?
For some of them, we're stuck for the time being. Others have time limits on them unless they take certain actions that's outlined in the statute, which could extend them. But the last two, we worked with Lake Clark Shores and Palm Springs, we put a period of time on it, and we shared in the revenues. Those were the last two that we were able to do that with. The others followed the statutes when they went into effect, and they've got, what, 30 years, 40 years?
Well, there's, some have extended way past 30 years and are now in the 40-year plan, and I'm not sure if they can continue to extend past 40 years.
Do we have any oversight or decision-making authority on those extensions?
No, most of the older ones in the 80s was before, they could do that without coming to the county, and some of these newer ones.
94?
Was it 94? I was thinking Lake Park, are they under, were they, had to be approved by the county? It was either Lake Park or Jupiter, definitely. So somewhere in that, one of those two, they had to come to the county for approval, but anything prior to that date, the cities were able to do without county approval.
I want to talk about the sheriff's budget for fiscal year 2023 for, for a couple moments, and the mayor will give me some latitude. I recall that when it was submitted, I think we received it on May 3 this year, it was certified by the sheriff on that date, that it was a $52 million increase versus what was presented today. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, say that again.
That it was a $52 million increase over last year's budget request.
What was submitted to us?
What was certified by the sheriff as necessary.
Is that the gross?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have 52 million in the submission that they submitted to the board.
They submitted to us, yeah.
And then today, there was a reference to that certification being amended to be $10 million less. Now, to be candid, I haven't been able to speak with the sheriff about this or any of his representatives. I understand there's extenuating circumstances, and we're very accommodating of that, but can you walk me through your discussions with the sheriff on how you came to that conclusion that once it was certified, they didn't need that $10 million anymore? And I want to, I want to explain to you why this board, as you saw, has been very supportive of public safety. It's actually one of our top priorities that we've agreed to year after year. There's also been some reporting lately that we have one of the best paid and best-funded sheriff's office in the state, and I think we're all proud of that. And for us to be able to advocate and ensure that we reach that public safety goal year after year, I need a little bit more information so that I can go to my constituents and inform them, including the press, why it is important that we increase the budget by the significant amount. So if you could just elaborate on what's happened behind closed doors that I haven't been a party to with regards to negotiations?
Every year I work with the sheriff, I normally meet with the sheriff. This year was an extenuating circumstance, so I did not meet with the sheriff direct. I did meet with his undersheriff, Chief DiMario, along with George Foreman, who is the Director of Finance and Administrative Services and Other Operations. We actually look at their budget compared to last year, what we've got in there this year, make some adjustments, and then we project out what would be, you know, reasonable in line with what I'm also doing with my own county departments. And we then make adjustments to their budget and tell them, here's what we're going to provide for you. This year worked a little different because of various circumstances. So when they submitted their budget, it was over what we would have told them, here's your dollar amount that you have, that we would request you work within, and it was over by $10 million. So I had a very discuss, I had a discussion with DiMario and, Chief DiMario, and Mr. Foreman, and said, I need to cut your, we need to reduce this cost, and we need to do it by 10 million because I need to be able to justify what we're doing here. They went back, they had a discussion, and they had it with the sheriff, Mr. Chief DiMario, and he came back and he said, okay, we'll, we'll live, we'll move some stuff around, and we'll live with 10 million less. So that is how we got to the 10 million less.
So what, what is the precise area that that money's not going to be funding anymore?
Because it's. I did not specify where that money was going to be cut. I told them, and that's what we normally do, we usually give them a dollar amount, and they move those dollars around. Now, we do anticipate and do look at when he submits, there are categories, personal services, operating capital, and then grants and aid, et cetera, that they lay out. And so they laid that out. I left that up to them on where they were going to cut, reduce their budgets by that 10 million.
Do we, as we sit here today, do we know where those reductions are going to be applied?
I do not know, per se.
Because I understand, and I've reviewed the documents submitted in May to the board, that the bulk of the increase is in personnel services. And given that we backfilled our budget with federal money last year to the tune, I think, of 40.
46.
46 million. I was surprised to see the escalation in personnel costs, but if that's what the costs are, then this board needs to find a way to accommodate the sheriff's office. We need to make sure that they're fully funded. And going beyond that, I would assume that in the out years, in '24, '25, when we start, again, talking about supermajorities, that the personnel costs won't be going down. They typically don't decline.
They don't.
But then we start looking at the capital outlay for the sheriff's office, which we're responsible for to fund. And, you know, in this fiscal year request, it's de minimis, and I say de minimis towards 1.8 million dollar request, but in light of what the out years are, because then it goes to 41 million in 2024, and then it goes to 27 million in 2025, 22 million in '26, 19 million in '27, and 19.5 million in '28. Each one of those requests and requirements really are going to be on top of this escalating personnel services costs. Can you provide the board some information on what these capital improvement increases are and why are we not trying to attack some of this in this fiscal year?
Again, I cannot tell you per se exactly what the out-year capital is. This year was a little different than what normally occurs. We can definitely request it, and I, they're, they're plugging in here some of their vehicle replacement for the out years, along with IT equipment replacement, patrol boat replacement, crime laboratory equipment replacement, along with radio communication equipment and replacement. There are dollars in the IST fund that we, in this year's budget, we did include some dollars as well as the prior years where we were replacing radios, computer equipment, et cetera. So that IST, those IST dollars are going to dry up very shortly, and so they allocated this into their out-year budgets. But just like your capital improvement program, depending upon the revenues coming in and how we have to balance the budget, I do my departments this way. I ask the sheriff, if we don't have the revenue to replace all of this stuff, then we sit down and we negotiate and determine what's going to be funded, what's not going to be funded. And then, of course, if he doesn't agree with me, he can definitely come to the board for additional dollars.
And so if it's listed in, in this budget, well, it's not for this budget year, but the '24 through '28 capital improvement, capital replacement plan for the sheriff's office amounts to about $100 million. That's not IST, they're, they're saying it's going to need to come from avalorum, so.
That is what they're saying. However, if we don't have it to give, then we're going to have to sit down and negotiate on what we can afford to give them in these particular areas. We have been consistent on replacing appropriate vehicles, IT equipment, not all of us replace IT equipment when the manufacturer says every four years, you got to replace it. We hold it even longer. And so we would be looking at the sheriff, to look at his budget, which he's done in the past, be able to say, here's X amount of dollars on capital side, you need to work through your process, and that's what he's done in the past. But just because it's laid out here does not commit the board to the out years. Your budget commitment is on an annual basis. The five-year looksee says, here's what we might have to do over the next five years, but it is not a final commitment.
For sure, and, and five years out, there's an additional $100 million in capital replacement that this board needs to plan for. Particularly given some of the supermajority votes that are required, and I don't know that we would actually get there, but I don't want to speak for the board. You know, I want to make sure that we do everything we can to support our law enforcement officers and our, and our wonderful sheriff, who we all deeply respect and appreciate his service. But is there going to be an opportunity during these proceedings to, to be able to ask these questions in public to, if not the sheriff, then to his chief deputy?
I can, I did request that they be here tonight. I can go back, I think after this session, they will see the need to answer those questions. I do understand that the deputy chief has reached out and will be meeting with you, but if it's the will of this board to ask them to come in, I will formally ask them to come in.
Had you asked them to come in prior to today?
I asked them, I asked, requested that they come in for this workshop meeting tonight.
And what was the response?
Their response was that they had spoken regarding their budget to you, and that they would not be able to come in tonight.
All right, because I can't speak for anyone else, I want to speak with Chief Deputy DiMario or whoever is in charge of crafting this budget at this point so that we can get some questions answered and advocate for them effectively. It's very difficult for this board to increase by 52 million a budget that is, you know, we already craft our budget around the sheriff's office, and they do incredible work, but I think it's important that this dialogue occur in public. And I don't have that opportunity today, so it's difficult for me to weigh in substantively and effectively, given that there's a host of issues that I think need to be discussed. And as in years past, the sheriff has done an excellent job of supporting and defending his budget requests, and I, and I think that in light of his absence here today, that the chief deputy or designated needs to be interacting with the board of county commissioners. Maybe they met with everyone but me, but I haven't had that opportunity yet, so it's just a little bit difficult for me today to weigh in on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before I get to Commissioner McKinley, we have limited ability to control the sheriff's budget, from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, the sheriff can come in with a budget, and he's certainly been very willing to negotiate with you, at least since I've been up here for the four years. But it's my understanding that if we come to an impasse, he has the ability to basically But it's my understanding that if we come to an impasse, he has the ability to basically take the budget to the governor and ask the governor to mediate or make a decision. So is that the process? If we came to a point where these requests are beyond our belief and ability to fund, that would be the next step of this process?
Yes, that is my understanding.
And one more thing. With respect to the budget, and Commissioner Kern was alluding to the fact that there are changes in the budget, that he's taken 10 million out, we don't quite know where that 10 million came from. But it's my understanding that the sheriff can reallocate money within his budget without any oversight from us. So once the budget is approved, if we approve this, he's got the ability to move it all into salary, if that was his decision, and we really have no oversight over that, is that correct?
The latest case law says that, yes.
The board can ask for a line item detailed budget, if that is what you would like to do. But other than that, it's, that's it. During the year, they're able to move between categories and divisions without coming back to the board.
And finally, to Commissioner Kern's remarks about that capital growing exponentially over the next few years, how would we capture those numbers? Let's assume like Commissioner Kern says, I mean, salaries are not gonna go down. So presuming he's gonna come back next year looking for a number between 30 and 50 million dollars for capital, where's that gonna come from?
That's gonna come from, hopefully, our property values continuing to rise without us having to raise our millage rate, and that's one of the reasons that we want to maintain a stable millage rate, not cut it and go up and down on millage. We know that we're gonna also have some other capital items on the board accounting commissioner's side. And so it has to be a balancing act between our constitutional officer, and I respect and definitely support law enforcement, but there is a balancing act. And I'm here to tell you, we cannot continue to balance this on just the backs of the BCC departments. We've got capital needs that we've gotta fulfill, and so we're gonna be looking at that, and that is one of the reasons that we're recommending moving forward in this budget with some of the projects that we are charged with on the BCC side, using our non-ad valorem bonds. So, yes, there, and we're, you know, in this particular time, we are increasing our reserves, and we are increasing our R and R.
Where is the funding coming from for the reworking of the administrative complex right now? His, the sheriff's offices, we're doing a major redo of that complex. Where is that money coming from? IST?
Yes, yes. It's IST and then a mix of ad valorem that we had already in the budget. So it's a mix, but it's primarily coming from IST.
Okay. Commissioner Kern, you can continue.
Thank you. And I'll be very brief. I believe that you had requested those line item documents from the sheriff's office.
I did request the personal services stuff.
Do you have an idea of when we'll receive those documents as a board? Because I may be able to decipher some of the, some of the concerns that I have by just going through their, their line item.
I will follow up with them to see when we, when I can expect them. I have not received them as of yet.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner McKinley?
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of follow-ups to some of the comments that have been made. Both staff and colleagues up here keep saying, cut the sheriff's budget. We are not cutting the sheriff's budget. I want to repeat that. We are not cutting the sheriff's budget. This is a decision of whether or not we are increasing it between 42 and 52 million dollars. Not a cut, it's an increase. Also, it was not case law that is allowing the sheriff to move his budget around between departments. The case law actually sided on the county commission's side of a case out of Alachua County. It was the legislature that instead over, basically overruled the court decisions, and within a, an otherwise fantastic bill, H Bill, House Bill Three, included a provision in there that allows the sheriff, after we approve the budget, to move it between categories, which is law enforcement corrections and court services, if you look at the sheriff's budget here, and then within those subcategories of personal services operating and capital outlay. So basically, we see this budget by program document in front of us today, we vote on this, this is what we've approved, this is what we've submitted to the public. After that happens, it can be moved around however it wants, without any budget amendments coming back before the board of county commissioners. We are lucky in this county that we have a current sheriff that's not going to allow that to happen. He'll keep, keep us in the loop, and I appreciate that. But moving forward, it is definitely a concern with something that we spent a lot of time on in Tallahassee, but we didn't win that one. Ms. Baker, on the employees per 1,000 population, you've got two different slides here on page 14 and 15. So 14, when you say all BCC departments, just for, for the public's sake, that includes departments that are funded based on user fees or permit fees, like planning, zoning, and building, and like water utilities. And so then, your page 15, where it's BCC ad valorem funded departments only, those are the ones that are solely funded by ad valorem dollars. So out of the ad valorem funded departments only, you've got 3,586 employees. How many of those are fire rescue?
Fire rescue's not, fire rescue's not in here. Fire rescue is not in here because it's not in the general fund. So this is primarily general fund. Fire rescue is its own MSTU, so they're not a part of this particular area.
They are ad valorem, but they're MSTU ad valorem, and we probably should have said that clearer on this slide, that it's really general fund, ad valorem funded departments.
Okay, so out of this, 6,959 then, how many are those, how many of those are fire rescue?
A hundred now.
I'm gonna confirm, but we think about 1,500.
1,500, but we'll confirm it.
I think it's important.
Seventeen eighty-three.
Seventeen eighty-
It's page four of the package.
Okay. I just think it's important when we're talking to the public about the number of employees, that that also includes their first responders.
Absolutely. And that, that figure also includes our third have added, we have added a third body to the-
A third firefighter, paramedic to the fire rescue trucks.
Rescue unit, absolutely.
Okay, so of the positions that you have requested, we didn't even go over that, but some of you have asked for additional positions. Could you give us a little background on those additional positions you're seeking?
The additions that we've, I'm recommending to the board is roughly about 15 positions total that's being proposed to be added. One of those positions is cooperative, if I can read directly across?
No.
We'll start with the Criminal Justice Commission, but that's neutral because we're adding one, but we're also deleting in another area.
It's a grant funded.
It's a grant funded position.
If I'm doing the numbers, I've got 155 positions between FY '22 and FY '23.
So most of them are within the fire rescue department. We're adding 52 positions in fire rescue, and another 10 in water utilities.
And fire rescue, I assume because we're bringing new stations online?
Bringing new stations online, and I think we're wrapping up that third person.
Right, we're adding two new trucks into service.
Okay, and the 10 water utility positions?
Look at theirs. As the population grows in those particular areas, in the unincorporated that water utility is servicing, then we need to be adding additional positions so that we can properly maintain and service those areas. But we can, on page, what page are we?
Page 63 of the package. Water utilities has several positions throughout. They have a construction coordinator to, for the increased volume of capital, project coordinator, a regulatory compliance specialist, a systems coordinator.
Okay, well, those, those 10 positions in water utilities are all paid for by user fees.
By user fees, correct.
They're not ad valorem impacted.
So 52 in fire rescue, 10 in water utilities, the remaining 93?
So total-
Ninety-seven, yeah.
Yeah, total BCC departments were 97 positions, 81 where we're in the enterprise funds or the user fee departments, and then the other-
Sixteen.
Fifteen were in various general fund departments. Probably the largest, there were six in parks and rec, and I think most of those were for Canyon Ranch Park, and also Peanut Island.
Okay, and I saw some of them were in libraries to allow for Sunday operating hours, so I appreciate that. I guess, I'm trying to figure out, how many of those have we put in planning, zoning, and building to handle the increase in permits?
Seven.
That's for the building division.
Right.
So in planning and zoning, we did not add any new positions in planning and zoning. However, for the building division, we did add seven, and those are supported through fees.
Okay. Haven't we consistently asked to try to fully staff that department? I mean, that's the number one complaint I hear from folks, is how long it takes to get things reviewed and permitted.
We've got positions in there, there are vacancies. I don't recall staff, and I'm gonna double check myself here, but I don't recall specifically planning, zoning, and building actually, I'm sorry, planning and zoning. Building did ask, I gave them all the positions that they requested in the building division.
Okay, and how are we coming in those hiring efforts to fill those vacancies?
We added a position on mid-year in HR to handle nothing but building division programs. And so we have made some progress. However, as we all know and hear, there are more jobs than there are people to fill them. We also maximize the use of third parties, where we allow them to come in, contract, and they go out and inspect special projects. However, they're run, they're running into the same problems that we are. They can't hire staff as well. Now, things may be getting better based upon the unemployment rate that we're hearing, but we, again, things are slow to come back, and the positions are difficult to fill. We have increased salaries in order for, to be more attractive to people coming to work for us. We're incentivizing folks to get more than one certification in our building division so that they can do more than one sign-off on those particular type plans that they're looking at. But we're making every effort to try and hire as many people as necessary to properly process applications.
Okay. All right, let's go back to the sheriff's budget real quick, and in all fairness, none of our constitutional offices are here tonight to present their budgets or answer any questions from us, so I certainly don't want to single him out or his department. But could somebody answer the question for me? Where are we in terms of purchasing and outfitting our officers with the body cams? I think we put that in the infrastructure surtax program with the department's blessing, so I'm just curious where we are.
It is in the IST, it is available this year. I do know that in speaking with our deputy sheriff, our undersheriff, DiMario, they were looking at, and have been looking at, the cameras, they've been talking to the provider, and I think today they even had a meeting with them on the body cams. So they're moving forward with planning to purchase them.
Okay. If we could get a more definitive timeline from them on that, I know we can only ask for it. And then the other question, and I know we've got people in the audience, and I sound like a broken record, but there is always the community's support to outfit the officers with Narcan. I'm curious, and I know that the sheriff has traditionally opposed that, and I'm just curious if we have a cost estimate of what that would cost to implement?
No, we do not.
Okay. Do you think Mr. Hewlett could work on getting us a cost estimate? I'm just, I'd like to know what it would cost.
Okay.
Knowing that he's got opposition to it. The CRA, I'm gonna go back to the CRA real quick. I swear I had a chart somewhere that showed a couple of these expired in 2024, and I cannot find that, but maybe I'm hallucinating. Explain to me, when I, when I look at what the base value was when some of these CRAs were established, and what the current value was. An explanation, what is the general purpose for originally creating a CRA?
It's to deal with blight and improve areas. The blight is the main one.
Okay, so when I look at, and not to target my colleague from District Four, but when I look at the city of Boca Raton has a CRA that was established in 1981, that was 40 years ago, and the base value was 73 million when it was established. The value in the next fiscal year is 2.27, round up one, billion dollars. I have to ask myself, how much blight are we still trying to fix?
I guess District Four should do.
And, and, you know-
You know, it's funny to think that blight was an issue in Boca Raton, but it was when this CRA was established. There is obviously redevelopment still going on in downtown, and I don't know if you would qualify it as blight anymore, but the county administrator and I have had various conversations. I think Boca is one of those that is coming up to that mark in '24, and I am certainly hoping that they are going to put an end to that animal and start paying their fair share in taxes, but I certainly have no way of controlling that decision.
Right, and I mean, you look at the city of West Palm Beach, 1984, 251 and a half million dollars, and their 2023 value is 4.066 billion dollars. So when these come, what's the process for renewing those? If these are, a couple of these are coming up in 2024, does the, the city, does the CRA, do they vote on it, or does it actually have to come back to the county commission for some sort of approval?
I do not believe these old ones would come back to us because they were not created under the county approval. It's only the newer ones from like, maybe Jupiter below, that the county has, the board has approved.
Wow, so these could go on in perpetuity?
I think they keep extending the dates, you know, I mean, I thought it was originally 30 years, but there's all kinds of rules on how to extend it, and I don't know the detail 100% on how they continue to extend, but-
It would certainly be a good thing to consider, including in future legislative agendas, to change that statute and that loophole, because that's a little bit ridiculous. So, and then, I guess the last question I have is, I know it's gonna come up at a hearing, so I might as well ask it now. Where are we on funding the community ID program? Has it been included in this year's budget?
It is in the base budget.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner Bernard is wearing very patiently, but I just wanted to ask one question. I'm having a little difficulty-
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner Bernard is wearing very patiently, but I just wanted to ask one question. I'm having a little difficulty reconciling the headcount increase. I thought we were talking in the original major assumptions of an increase in ninety-six ad valorem and non-ad valorem, but as I'm looking at the chart that you have here between twenty-two and twenty-three, it seems to go up one-hundred-and-fifteen.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand you.
Okay, I'm looking on page fourteen, and we have the difference between fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three, about one-hundred-and-fifteen employees. The headcount goes up one-hundred-and-fifteen. And then, in your major assumptions and factors, you stated that fifteen ad valorem-funded positions and eighty-one non-ad valorem-funded positions, that would be ninety-six. Is there, what's the discrepancy?
Turn on your mic. It's because the, this slide is budget-to-budget. There were positions added during the year of twenty-two that are not included in the twenty-two number on the slide.
The page four of your long document.
Yeah.
Actually reflects the final FY twenty-two, the number of positions. And that includes the total BCC ad valorem funded. And then it also adds to it the other departmental and agencies. And so that does include our airports, PZB, and all of our other departments that are independent. They're at a total of sixty-eight-hundred, sixty-three was our final count for twenty-two, twenty-two. And then, based on that, we added an additional ninety-seven positions. But that ninety-seven also includes that grant-funded position, so we had to net that out.
So the sixty-nine-fifty-nine is approved positions, not necessarily filled positions?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, big difference between filled and approved.
Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Baker, you had mentioned in regards to the NAV bond, those projects. I know for me, in regards to the NAV bond projects, you know, since we're gonna have a discussion next week on, you know, the environmental bond and the housing bond, you know, I'd like for us to at least have a discussion regarding those projects after this board has made a decision on the housing bond and the environmental bond, so in that way, we can have a total picture of those decisions, if the board wouldn't mind. Ms. Baker, you had mentioned that you had requested for the sheriff to, you know, to appear. In regards to the budget, I just want to make sure I understand the budget process. What's really this board's role in regards to approving, you know, the budget for the county?
Your role is I present a budget to you.
I think your mind is off.
Who's still on the microphone?
I present a budget to you, and we do it in a workshop setting, where you can ask any questions and give any directions that you want. But at the end of the day, this board of county commissioners approve our budget, period.
Just to make sure now, do you, like, let's say that you have discussions with the sheriff, and are you the final say-so in regards to the budget?
I am not. I start working with our constitutional officers, including the sheriff, and my staff. I come up with a proposed budget. They can agree or disagree, constitutional officers, not my staff. And they can come to you and get further direction. Normally, I'm able to work out something with the sheriff, and then he'll come to you after that to let you know that we've come to an agreement and, I guess, you know, provide you with any additional information that you're looking for. We not only have this workshop, but then in September, we have two more hearings on our budget before it's finally adopted. And it is the board's final say in what goes on. No, I do not have the final say.
Because like, you know, I spoke to the undersheriff today, and he said that he agreed with you on the budget, and that's the reason why, you know, they don't have to be here. So, do I need to be here myself? I just, because I was told that they agreed on a budget with you, and that's it.
I recommend budgets to this body. This body makes the decision on what goes and what does not, not Virginia. But you, as your administrator, I'm charged with bringing you a recommended budget.
Because, like, I spoke to you, I believe, last week in regards to some, I had some questions in regards to, you know, the increase that, you know, the sheriff is asking. And so, because I'm, not only, I see the increase, but I'm also concerned about, you know, the future of, you know, what are the great technologies that the sheriff is employing? And also, you know, what are the capital projects that Commissioner Kernar mentioned? And I just, I had some questions. And, you know, I wanted to ask some questions to, you know, the sheriff's office, but you said that you did make a, I guess it was an informal request, is that correct?
Well, I did not put it in writing, but I spoke to both deputy, the undersheriff, DiMario, along with George Foreman, and I asked them to be here in case the board had questions.
And you stated that the undersheriff told you that the sheriff's already spoke to us.
He spoke, he told me that he spoke with the sheriff after my request that they be here. And the sheriff told, and again, I'm not, I have not spoken with the sheriff. Let me be really clear on that. But speaking with deputy, the undersheriff, DiMario, he spoke with the sheriff, and the sheriff informed him that he had spoken with the board and that they should not be at the meeting tonight.
Now, I've been a commissioner for the past, I think this is like my fifth year, and this is the fifth budget. Typically, when I do have questions in regards to the budget or with the sheriff's budget, you know, typically the sheriff will meet with me individually after whatever that's been agreed. But I know that I didn't have a discussion with the sheriff in regards to the budget. And so, I believe that, you know, I have some questions that I'd like to know about in regards to the sheriff's budget, some of the increases, I'd like to know about the future. And I think that it's important for us to, if it's possible, for us to do a formal request to, because I guess it wasn't done in writing. And so the sheriff made a decision in regards to whether or not he should attend. But I believe that it's important for us as a board, as a board, to, if we have some questions to the person who prepared the budget or the undersheriff, that if there are any questions, that we can ask those questions. So, I know for me, I believe that we should be able to make a formal request, if it's possible, if the board would, wouldn't incline to request for, to ask some of these questions, you know, to whoever. So in that way, we can properly plan for, because we have to make supermajority votes, and so we can properly plan for the future. So I'd love to hear the commissioners, if that's something that we would like to do, so in that way, we can do our job, our constitutional job.
Commissioner Bernard, I, if it's not objected to by your colleagues, I would suggest we make a request that the sheriff or his representative join us on July twelfth at our next meeting where we will be setting the millage, and we would have an opportunity at that time to have this conversation. Okay, without objection, we'll send a letter and make that request. Commissioner Bernard, you want to continue?
No, that's it. Thank you for that, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Marino, you haven't had an opportunity yet.
I haven't had my opportunity, but I believe Commissioner Kernar had piped in and had punched in. Did you want to respond to Commissioner Bernard?
No.
Okay, all right. Just because this is only my second time doing this here, I have a couple of observations. One of them is that if we're looking at the constitutional officers and the percentage of change increases in all the constitutional officers, the sheriff's budget increase of five-point-five is actually in line with all the other constitutional officers. So regardless of the fact that there's over four thousand employees in the sheriff's department, if you're comparing apples and oranges due to the percentages, he's in line with everybody else. But I would also look at the gross appropriations budget, where law enforcement is thirty-one percent of the budget, and sheriff's corrections and judicial is eleven-point-eight percent, which equates to two-hundred-and-twenty-one million dollars. Maybe that's something that comes out of the control of the sheriff and comes back to the county commission. Is that doable, feasible? Have we talked about that? As I said, this is only my second time looking at this, so it is just, is that something that has to be under the purview of the sheriff? And if so, that's one thing. If not, it's an opportunity to really have another bird's-eye view on that portion of the budget. Ooh, Virginia, you're squinting.
Corrections is county-wide, so it is the charge of the board of county commissioners. That portion, along with judicial, has always been serviced by the sheriff's office. There are other counties that definitely, Broward is one, that breaks out corrections, and it's handled under the BCC.
Would it be, would it behoove us to see what it would cost us as a county to do that, bring it under our auspices instead of the sheriff?
I will do whatever this board directs me to do. I'm just throwing it out there. I'm happy to hear what the rest of the commission says.
Commissioner Kernar, you want to respond?
Thank you. I think that the sheriff does an excellent job in all of his purview that he has over this county in law enforcement, including corrections. And the CJC and this board has had a very deliberate goal of reducing the jail population, which we've achieved great success in. I don't see, from an operational standpoint, why we would want to go down that road. Now, I know in conversations that I've had with the sheriff, he's mentioned that to me over the years, that if you guys want to take corrections back, then you can. But none of this is an indictment of the professionalism or services provided by the sheriff's office. I think we just need to have these conversations in public. So for me, having been a law enforcement officer, understanding the nuances of the corrections profession, I think it's much better housed under the sheriff.
Okay, well, I was just, it was just an opportunity to say, here's two-hundred-and-twenty-one million dollars that we, the county, would then have eyes on. Because we're always asking for the eyes on in the budget, so it was just a thought.
Commissioner Marino, if I can.
Commissioner Bernard?
If I can add, I, you know.
And I am not questioning the sheriff's ability to do his job, absolutely not. I feel safe everywhere I go. People move here to this county because they feel safe. Public service, public safety is the number, is the number-one thing that people are looking for when they're picking a place to live. So I applaud the sheriff for what he's done, for everything. But this is not, this is not any target or anything at the sheriff. This is just getting two-hundred-and-twenty million dollars in a different pot of money, that's all.
But I, Commissioner Marino, I think that that's a good question for when we do have the discussion on the twelfth. So in that way, either the sheriff or his deputy can actually answer that question. So in that way, we can kind of like properly make decisions.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKinley?
Yeah, follow-up question. The one million dollars for the addiction stabilization unit, can we get an accounting from how it's currently and previously been spent?
Yes.
You know, knowing that they've made some changes over there, I just want to make sure it's actually being utilized the way we intended it to be utilized. And then, just, I keep hearing about this bond referendum meeting we're having next week, and I have yet to see a public notice on it. So for planning purposes, I would certainly love to know exactly when we're having this workshop, because it's nowhere on my calendar.
The item is coming back to the board next Tuesday on the twenty-first. We're finalizing the last language, resolution language with our bond council this afternoon, so you will have an agenda item no later than first thing in the morning. And it will be attached to the item that's shown on our website as well. All of that will be attached on tomorrow.
So we have a nine-thirty, a ten-thirty, a two o'clock, and a three o'clock already on that workshop schedule, so where exactly is it going?
This is a regular item that we will place on the agenda, because we need to place it on there at the June twenty-first meeting in case the board then wants to push it back to a later date, so that we will have enough meeting times in order to be able to provide the, if the board chooses to issue environmental bonds or housing bonds and/or both, we will have enough time to provide the language of the supervisor of elections by August fifth.
Thank you.
Just for clarity, that would be an item that'll be on nine-thirty for that meeting? Or how are we gonna handle?
It'll be, normally what we do is we handle the regular items, if we've got regular items on the workshop agenda. So we'll take care of that right before we start with the nine-thirty workshop.
Okay, so anybody who wants to come in and have a say on our deliberations on the two GEO bonds, they are, they should be here by nine-thirty on Tuesday.
Okay, so then we know that the ten-thirty item and then the rumored appearance by the supervisor of elections who's filling the nine-thirty AM slot are actually not going to happen at nine-thirty and ten-thirty. We know that that bond referendum workshop's probably gonna take the entire morning. I just want to make sure that those that are coming to speak on the other items, that they show up thinking that their time's certain at ten-thirty and they're not heard till two, let's not waste their time and make sure that we advertise appropriately.
Go back and read.
Well, I think the GEO bonds is gonna take some conversation, so.
For those workshop items that we can delay, we will delay them. The, we didn't anticipate hosting the bond items on June twenty-first. We anticipated on doing it a little earlier, but that did not occur. So we are hosting it on the June twenty-first date. And so if I need to move some items off of the workshop, we will do that. I will make that decision on tomorrow.
All right. All right, let me hit another subject which has not been touched upon except in very glancing blow. I understand that you have a very solid budget here. You've worked within the parameters that were in front of you, working with the millage, and trying to present to us a balanced budget. You know, from our conversations, I have some concerns. I have concerns because we have a CPI running almost eight percent right now. Our residents are dealing with the problems of what is probably gonna be called stagflation with gas prices now over five dollars, with insurance prices. If you can get insurance, going through the roof. It's a difficult time to be looking at our residents and taking a thirteen-point-something percent increase in a budget when they are tightening their belts. And I'm not saying that you haven't put together a budget that is tight, but I'm wondering if my colleagues feel that we shouldn't be taking this opportunity, especially with this, you know, increase in funds, and not with saying the fact we had to plug forty-six million last year. So that hole is there and has to be plugged this year. So I'm mindful of the fact that we have to just pick up the forty-six million that ARPA funds took care of last year. But I am, I don't want to be accused of being tone-deaf. And I think our residents would appreciate some demonstration that we don't have to go to the maximum of what is available to us based upon the increased value of the real estate in our county and be satisfied that we're just keeping millage at a flat number. And not that that's not a great thing, because it's, what, the eleventh year that we would be keeping millage at the same rate. keeping millage at the, at the same rate. But I'm interested to hear from my colleagues if you think that this is something that we need to address, or whether this is, given all that's been presented to us tonight, we should just be satisfied that the, the budget that's before us is sound, it's going to replenish reserves, it's going to address some capital needs that are there, and to reduce it would be painful in some situations. So I'm certainly soliciting my colleagues. And Commissioner Kearney, you win the first shot.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I think, you know, you're demonstrating in part why, why you're a great leader, and I don't, I don't know that you've ever been accused of being tone deaf, but certainly this is an appropriate time to be proactive in having these conversations. And I think that's a lot of what my comments about today were, was in reference to getting more clarity and a, and a bitter, bigger, better picture about what, what the real impacts are of our constitutional officers. And I, you know, I would love to join, there have been other commissioners on this board that have publicly talked about trying to, I guess in essence you're saying, reduce the millage rate. And I, listen, we're a bipartisan board that is always advocating for the best for our constituents. Sometimes that means we need more money to execute on our duties, and sometimes that means that we can reduce the millage rate and, and cut. And I think that I would be in a better position to support that concept if I had a better picture of what the real budget picture is. And at this point in time, for the reasons previously stated, I don't have that clarity. Certainly, we all aspire to reduce the budget, or at least reduce the millage rate. But at the same time, and, and it, you know, I hate to have to say this, because it's not a popular position, but if we need those funds to execute on our constitutional duties, because most of the work in government gets done at the local level, then we need to be there to support it. Now, on the other hand, we're talking about budgets in the out years that require supermajority, and that's going to cause some problems. And I think I saw an asterisk there. At one point, it can be, it has to be unanimous. Is that true?
It could be. It's some former-
Okay, so-
That's like five-
Right.
Mills or more.
Okay, all right, so we're not touching on that?
If we're raising it, we'd have to be unanimous.
So I think there's always an appetite. But let's get clarity on, on the budget picture and see if we, if we can't make that happen. If not, then we're going to have to do what we need to do and, and collect the budget.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
So one of the things I think I'd like to put out there, and first off, I appreciate your comments, Mayor, and everyone else throughout this workshop. But one of the things, you know, we heard today was that there's potentially going to be another additional round of funding, or additional funds through the property appraiser in her estimation on what we'll collect. One of the thoughts I had was, you know, what, and I'd like maybe to direct staff to come back and say, well, how much, when they get those numbers, to bring that back to us and say, well, if we've got a balanced budget today, or if we're going to make changes to it, but at least those funds are not needed to balance this budget, and that we can say, okay, let's, let's defer collecting those funds, and it would allow for a millage reduction because those dollars wouldn't need to be collected to fill the budget that's in front of us today. There could be other things, as you, you all have talked about, there are other things that potentially may be able to be looked at or re-looked at and get further clarification on, on, you know, what exactly we can do. But I, I, I saw that, I see that as an opportunity, as, as an area, and, and then ask staff to, in addition to estimating what the millage reduction potentially could be, what projects then would also, I, because I assume there's other projects that would like to be funded, but would not, would not be able to be funded through those, those revenues.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate you bringing this up, and as the Vice Mayor mentioned, you know, if we're going to have additional funds that may come in in July, and if there is an opportunity to reduce the millage by at least something that we can give to our, our residents in the county, I think that we should explore that. So let's take a look at it and see how we can help our residents.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinley?
I just, I just want to get this straight. We want to talk about reducing the millage and pass, but then in the same breath, talk about possibly passing two bond referendums to increase the millage?
Well, remember-
Just want to make sure that's where we're going here.
Okay, Commissioner Kearney, you can respond.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not, the conversation is not to pass and tax our residents more on the bond issue, it's to ask them if they want to do that. They get to pick their priorities, and that's a way to offer that, is, is, do you want this on the referendum or not? I think it should go to the people, and they can decide. But if, if the board doesn't agree, that's fine. But let's be clear, if it goes on the ballot, we don't decide whether to increase our taxes, the people do. And that's a point that bears, is worth repeating. So it's, I think we can, as a board, handle many issues at one time. I don't know that we'll get to a millage rate reduction, but certainly I think there's value in allowing our constituents to decide whether they should be taxed or not. And maybe they'll say no, probably would say no on some, on some of the issues. And some of the other issues are more pressing, and I'll let this board decide ultimately what those are.
And Commissioner McKinley, I, I don't see a contradiction in, in the attempt to see if we can reduce millage at the same time that we're going to the voters, to see if they are inclined to support two geo-bonds or one geo-bond, or however we, we finally decide.
Just keep in mind that the revenues that are raised from the millage are the same revenues that are being proposed to be set aside for affordable housing projects, for environmental projects, for extended library hours, for Palm Trans services, for criminal justice reform efforts, for substance use and mental health disorders, for healthcare programs, for additional fire rescue, firefighter paramedics, and to help continue keeping our streets safe through the sheriff's office. Just want to point that out. So when we cut the millage rate, we cut the revenues to housing and environmental programs.
And I don't think anybody disagrees with you, and I think, as Commissioner Kearney said, we have responsibilities up here, and we'll fully fund what is our responsibility to make sure that our county is serving our residents appropriately. And I think that, again, my, my purpose in bringing this forward was to say, if we are benefiting from an appreciation of property values here, maybe we don't have to take full advantage of every last dollar in those increases. And that's, I think, worthy of at least a conversation. We may land in a different spot and say, you know, look, we could say we need to increase the millage, that's a possibility too. But I think that it should be on the table. Commissioner Bernard?
Just to make sure, what you're presenting us is a balanced budget right now, based on the revenues that, not based on what we're getting on July 1st. Is that correct?
Correct. These are based on the estimate as of June 1.
So if, if we don't make any changes, we're not increasing, if we don't make any changes to this budget, the extra dollars that we do receive, we can give that back to the taxpayers, and we're not reducing anything in terms of services.
Right. You would be-
You still need to reduce the millage.
Yes, but we would, but those are the dollars that we would be only potentially reducing it by.
We will, I heard you loud and clear, we'll bring on July 12th, when you talk to the, the sheriff's offices here to be represented, and they can answer your questions direct. We'll also bring back whatever that change in revenue from the tax collector back to you. As your administrator and as the property appraiser stated today, we may not receive the same level of funding next year. So when you reduce your millage, and we know that in projected out, we've got capital projects we need to do, et cetera. I'm just going to say to you to please keep in mind that when we reduce the millage and revenues drop off, I, I don't believe any of us want to come back and have to increase it. But I respect and hear what you're saying, so I will bring this back to you on July 12th.
Historically, did this body reduce the millage during the downturn in the 2007, '08 period?
No, sir.
They just kept going forward? Okay. All right, well, we have three people who-
We actually increased-
We increased?
During the- Slightly, slightly.
Okay, all right. We have three people who have waited very patiently, and so Commissioner Kearney, would you please call them to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. And unless I missed any cards, we have three public speakers. The first one will be Chip Block, Vice Mayor of Jupiter Inlet Colony, followed by Lisa Franklin. And then the final speaker will be Stacy Katz. Then we have some public comment cards that are written.
Chip? It's always great to see you.
Great to see you all, thank you. First, I'd like to compliment Ms. Brown and Ms. Baker on doing their usual fantastic job under trying circumstances. I was one of the original members, charter members of the Taxpayer Action Board back about 14 years ago, and we, after two years of millage rate increases of 15% and 9%, we advocated reducing or holding the millage rate steady. I would suggest that one exercise that might be worthwhile, given the mayor's comments, is to look at a certain breaking point in the property values, whether it's the median or something more than that, and seeing how much of the increase that we're looking at, based on the June numbers, let alone the July numbers, is being paid for by people who can well afford it as opposed to the others. I think, given how the state legislature, over the years, has hamstrung local governments with the ability to raise taxes, it's extremely dangerous to lower the millage at this point, especially as Ms. Baker said, what we know are going to be, be the needs in the out years for financing for capital and other expenses. I've been involved in budgets where rates were, tax rates were yo-yoed over a period of time, and it's generally very, very unhealthy, based on either optimistic or very pessimistic ideas of what is going to happen with the economy. So I would urge you to be very, very cautious, very careful in looking at a reduction in the millage rate at this time, based on what Ms. Baker was saying. Thank you.
Thank you very much, your comments.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Lisa Franklin?
Hi, my name is Lisa Franklin. I am a Palm Beach County resident. I work in Palm Beach County. I am also a member of Southeast Florida Recovery Advocates, and our concern is that PBSO is not carrying naloxone. Palm Beach County leads the state and arguably the nation with progressive substance use disorder and recovery support services, so much so that even when I was in Tallahassee, and it was Sheriff's Day when I was up there, they didn't even believe me that PBSO doesn't carry Narcan, because it's a policy that's so opposite of everything else that we do. Touching base on a couple of the points that were brought up, as far as cost for it, it costs $0 to implement, because there is a program in Palm Beach County called the Heroes Program that benefits veterans programs, law enforcement, first responders programs for the training and allocation of receiving Narcan for their departments. Also, we've been told that it's against policy and for liability, so here's the National Sheriff's Association's stance on it. On November 1st, 2017, the White House announced the release of the fentanyl safety recommendations for first responders. The recommendations provide first responders with unified scientific and evidence-based recommendations to protect themselves and others when in the presence of fentanyl. The National Sheriff's Association supports the release of these recommendations as a critical first step in keeping first responders safe in the field. The recommendations are a result of federal interagency working group coordinated by the White House National Security Council. Stakeholder association organizations representing the medical, public health, law enforcement, fire, EMS, and occupational safety and health disciplines provide invaluable input to inform the interagency working group's efforts and their feedback. The National Sheriff's Association is one of 24 associations and organizations offering collaborative support for the recommendations. The Surgeon General, I am emphasizing the importance of the overdose-reversing drug naloxone for patients currently taking high doses of opioids prescribed per pain and individuals misusing prescription opioids. It is imperative that healthcare practitioners, first responders, family and friends of people who come in contact with people knowingly having substance use disorder, and community members, carry the life-saving drug naloxone and keep it within its safe reach to save a life. Again, here's another part of the National Sheriff's Association. How can law enforcement help an individual overdose on, who's overdosing on opioids? When a law enforcement officer encounters an individual who has overdosed on an opioid, the medication naloxone, also known as Narcan, can reverse the effects of an overdose. When administered promptly, Narcan blocks the effects of opioids and can allow little to extra time to carry out rescue breathing and first aid until medical help arrives.
I'm going to have to ask you to sum it up.
In short, we've been told also that the reason that PBSO does not carry it is because fire rescue gets to overdose calls before the sheriff's office gets to those 911 calls. But even using common sense, fire rescue and EMS do not patrol the streets, they just, they leave as soon as they're called versus-
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then our final speaker will be Stacy Katz.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Stacy Katz, I'm a Palm Beach County resident, retired law enforcement officer, mom, advocate. I am a, a board member of the county, the Palm Beach County Hub, also own, own, run a nonprofit to help people in early addiction, early recovery. And personal, personally, I have saved my own son three times from Narcan. If you look around this room, you could probably triple it or quadruple it with the people that have been saved just in this county, or maybe more. I don't have the exact statistics, because I'm just talking as a layperson. Of all the people that have been saved from Narcan and naloxone, or naloxone, however you want to put it, overdose is reversible, death is not. This is unacceptable. When I first found out, as a retired police officer, that we did not carry Narcan, I was shocked. I was, I was more than shocked, and I started doing more and more research, and more and more research. And two-thirds of the sheriff's, sheriff's offices in the state do not, two-thirds of this sheriff's, he does not issue Narcan. So there are some that are carrying, but they're not all. Even some don't, don't believe that, like in Martin County, I was doing CIT training, and they didn't believe that they weren't carrying down here in Palm Beach. I'm going to take a quote that unfortunately, or fortunately, was me. How do they feel, meaning police officers, when they get to the scene and they don't have what they need? You need to ask the law enforcement officer who isn't allowed to carry Narcan, would you be able to live with yourself if you couldn't save that life that night? And I think, and that, I was quoted, it was, we were front, front page news from, from Lisa's organization, SEFRA. Also, I have a petition with over 5, 1,500 names signed. And if we were invited or allowed, I can fill this room, like I said, plus some, with all of the moms, dads, loved ones of people who are here today, we are losing a generation. There is a life-saving drug. There is no reason why the police officers shouldn't carry it. And like, like Lisa touched on, you've got SAMSA, you have the CDC, you have the World Health Organization, they all recommend that. Not only the police officers carry it, but everyone does. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Katz.
All right, that finishes our public comments. I believe we have a couple that were just to be received and filed. Did you want to?
Yes, Mayor, there's only two comment cards submitted online, one from Ganel Goslin and one from Maureen Killian. They both pertain to not carrying naloxone, and both are very well-written, and I'll distribute them to the board.
Okay, we have them received and filed without objection? All right, County Commissioner, County Administrator, we thank you very much for your presentation. I know that we're going to be back here on July 12th, when we will set the maximum millage rate. There'll be no vote tonight on anything we've discussed. Is there any other comments from the members of the commission? Seeing no lights?
Mayor, I'd like to just correct one thing. I don't want to leave you with the-
Sure, absolutely.
... information incorrect. On the Roger Dean- On the Roger Dean Stadium, I don't know why I had half a million stuck in my mind on the initial years, but to correct that, it's 150,000 a year during years one through nine, and then it goes up to 1.6 million in year number 10, and then 4.7 million until year 25. So I wanted to correct that. And that revenue will, TDC bed tax funds will be used for the revenue. So I'm staying corrected on that issue.
We thank you for the clarification. Seeing no further business, this workshop is adjourned.